You're so spread out, it seems like people are missing, but they're not. Good evening, everyone. It's 7 o'clock and time for the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Board of Education meeting. This is a meeting of the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, but not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Price is absent.
All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Flag's right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a former scout leader, I always expect to hear two after we're all done. Mr. Liming, please present the treasures report.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March 10th meeting?
Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? Any adjustments or corrections for the minutes? Any adjustments? All right. Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I think a motion to approve the treasures report for the month ending March 31st, 2022.
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Mr. Kinsey?
Just a few things I wanted to point out. One is that we have another meeting yet in April, but the meeting in May will be when I will present the five-year forecast for approval by the board. Has to be filed by May 31st to the state of Ohio.
Hmm.
If you look at the blue sheets included with the board agenda, the two or three things that I'd like to point out each time are that on the next-to-last sheet, where it says the treasures budget report, we can see the percentages of the total for each of these items that are listed here. And the key ones, of course, always are, in my mind, the fact that for revenue, if you can see, we have the 15% and the 9%, the second and third items listed there. Those are the state and federal revenues that we have received so far this year with nine of the 12 months expired. So 75% of the year has expired fiscal year. And we're only receiving 24% of our revenue from the state this year so far. For expenditures, the key one there is the school districts are always heavily into the salary benefits end because we're people industry. And we have 55 and 20% on those two. 75% of the budget goes to those items. And like I always say, as long as it's under 80, we're in good shape. April is a three payroll month, so that will change a little bit for the next report. Any questions about anything here? I have the pie charts for a better look and details how we balanced out the bank and all these other items.
That's pretty typical that the state's lagging that much and sending us...
The, I was thinking about that. What really is happening there is that the other part of the fraction has already arrived, like the real estate taxes have been paid. It's a big chunk of our budget. So because that's already been paid, it lowers that percentage we're receiving from state and federal. Makes sense.
The percentage. Okay.
Right.
Mr. Liming, is there a place where we can post this online, the blue parts? I wasn't sure if I was looking at the right spot because I had that question in an email from someone. If that was posted in more?
Yes, I think we can put down the website.
I would appreciate that. That's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, when you're finished with your note.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes. Is there any correspondence that folks want to talk about that was sent to them since the last meeting? Okay. I didn't really either. Okay. So going on to number five, good news recognition. First of all, we begin with a resolution for the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local Schools' school nurses. Whereas children are the future and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas all students have a right to have their health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas children today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years. And whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of our students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children, especially in these unprecedented times. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our community's children. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based mental health teams. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local School District celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of our school nurses and their exemplary efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools and offers gratitude to school nurses who contribute to our community by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn throughout the year. Be it further resolved that the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local School District strongly encourages all members of our community, staff, and students to join with us in personally expressing appreciation to our school nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work. And therefore, I make the motion that we adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? Any questions or comments? Certainly, in the last two years, our school nurses have done just an incredible job with the pandemic. And this recognition is more than deserved, highly appreciated, goodness gracious.
For our citizens of the year.
And our citizens of the year, that's right. Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Motion passes. And not to just let it go to that. And do have recognition certificates for our school nurses first and about. Congratulations. Congratulations. Remember, leave last chance.
Thank you for making that last chance. Last chance.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Eileen Malice? Thank you so much. Laura Gess? We have a few more recognitions.
Can you four come on up? Let's get a picture of you four so we can get that on social media and so forth. If I can just say quickly, I appreciate, as they're coming up here, appreciate all their hard work, dedication. We had numerous meetings over the past two years and a lot of spirited discussions that we had. Just of all the things that were going on and just knowing that they were really, everybody was, but they're true professionals, true healthcare providers, really had the best interest of their kids, the staff, everybody in mind. And so, just extremely appreciative. But we talked a lot over the past two years.
We probably owe you an apology. We may or may not have raised our voices to you. So sorry. Sorry about that.
Let's just say, these four ladies are not yes ladies. We have good discussions and back and forth and so forth. But I really appreciate, really appreciate that. Yeah.
We appreciate all the support you gave us. I mean, you were always checking in on us. We appreciate that. Our families who put up on late days, weekends here during the worst of it. So then Dinah Belfeld, who was, she was the greatest of all time, swooped in when we needed it and had our backs, our administrators. It took a whole community, but we got through it.
Truly appreciate it.
For right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bellebrook High School Competition Cheer Squad was a 2022 state qualifier. So, Miss Sweetman?
Thank you.
Thank you, they're all across. They all see everything besides cheer. So it's great.
Thank you very much. All right, for girls wrestling, OHSAA 2022 State Qualifier goes to Jay DeWitt. The 2022 State Indoor Track Qualifier in the long jump and high jump is Owen Countryman. The 2022 State Indoor Track Qualifier for high jump is Monica Hodgens. The 2022 State Indoor Track Qualifier for pole vault is Tony Giomani. The 2022 State Indoor Track Qualifier for pole vault, also Isaac LaFelt. And finally, for the Kids Heart Challenge from the American Heart Association, the 2022 building coordinator generating, please, Stacy Tinter coordinated that. Stacy's not here this season. Okay. Going on to reports to the board. Betsy Gann for our Director of Curriculum and Gifted Services.
Set some seats so I can see the seat. Hey, you can see over there. I know the board members have already had a chance to take a peek there at a program that we have looked at over the course of, actually, looking at the materials since, I don't know, the last month. Talking about a phonics program really started before the COVID closure back in 2020. So I'm here to talk about the journey that we've been on in K-12 with the Stephen Bell staff and looking at phonics programs and looking at what we want to accomplish there with a literacy program and some of the things that have come down the pike since we first started that journey back in 2019. So I apologize I'm standing this way, but I want to make sure the board hears what I have to say here. So why did we go down the road to adopt a phonics program? Historically, our approach to reading instruction has been with very few adopted curriculum materials for the teachers. And they have done an amazing job despite that. We have had historical budgeting a long, long time ago, dollars flowing directly to the building and then building-level decisions, decisions being made at the grade levels, et cetera, instead of a more vertical approach. So over time, we have changed that really because so many things have come our way that has sort of forced that decision, forced us to become more cognizant of a vertical flow of curriculum, increased rigor with state standards, increased rigor with state testing, and lots of other legislation. Response to intervention. We have been doing that, looking at data intensively for a number of years. So that sort of pushes the envelope in terms of we need consistent ways to collect data over time. So then we start to collect more consistent assessment data and therefore start to instruct in a more consistent way with consistent materials. We also have the third-grade reading guarantee that's been around for a long time now. Lots of data, lots of intense instruction as well as intervention that's sort of standardized some practices. And then now, we have the dyslexia legislation that's really been one of the biggest things we've seen in early childhood, certainly since I've been in curriculum. And there's a lot along with that. We've been studying really intently as a literacy team here in the district, with administrators, Mrs. Keaton, our school psychologist, Mr. Phelps representing Belle Creek, as well as some outside folks helping us along the way. We are going to be required to screen for dyslexias starting next year. 100% of our students in grades A through 3 for one year only. That's that first year of the legislation. Screening only, not identifying. After that, we will screen at kindergarden only. So it's not going to be a big panic. We are definitely looking forward to catching any issues that we see pretty early, hopefully prescribing the right interventions and talking to parents very early about potential issues that we may see with reading with your child. This should work well with third-grade guarantee screenings. We don't know exactly what this will look like. This is rolling out very slowly. We don't have a list yet of approved assessments. It's not going to be up to us to decide how we're going to screen. We have to wait for the Ohio Department of Education to give us a list of approved assessments. And then we get to purchase those.
So I'm not only asking for phonics stuff.
We'll be coming back. All right. So all of that drives a need for a more systematic approach to reading instruction. We want to make sure that we have a guaranteed curriculum. Our kids deserve that. It shouldn't really depend on which teacher we have as to what kind of instruction we get. We want to make sure that our great teachers have great materials in their hands. So we want to make sure we're providing them with evidence-based materials. Do the materials have science behind it proving that these do work? When we put these in place and use them with fidelity every day, will the kids learn? Do we have research to back that up? And we made sure that the things we looked at did indeed have that research behind it. That research is based on the science of reading. We've been learning about that and we'll continue to learn about that. That's also embedded in the training for this particular program. This program utilizes what we call a multi-sensory approach. So it's pretty logical, multi-sensory, not just listening to a teacher teach, but we're going to be using our hands and other senses to understand reading. So the kids will get kits that are theirs. They can tap out words. I haven't been trained, so I'm not going to do this for you. But they use sand, I think, and some of the... I'm seeing lots of nods over here. We have a lot of people in the audience that have some experience with this. Thank goodness. Some of which are on the board agenda, which is great. So we are excited about that. It's very engaging for kids. We have seen inaction in classrooms. A lot of Mrs. Keaton's teachers have already been in other classrooms. We've sent teachers to Northmont, Miami'sburg, Mac River, Kettering. Where else? That's it?
And that.
Yeah. And then we have some more going to Mac River, I think, later in the week or next week, tomorrow's Friday. But there is a lot of excitement. It makes a big difference for the teachers to talk to teachers that are using the materials. So we appreciate it, and we bring districts helping us out. The multi-sensory approach, I should mention, is based on Orton-Gillingham methods. A lot of people have heard of Orton-Gillingham. That's an overarching approach to scientifically-based reading instruction that is multi-sensory. There are several companies that use OG, or Orton-Gillingham methods. Foundations is one of them. The science of reading I've mentioned. There are five areas for the science of reading. We also call it the Big Five of Reading. And these are those five areas. We're only talking tonight about phonics, but there are five areas. We have PEGERTY. That is a specific program. We have that in place already at Stephen Bell. That's for phonemic awareness. We're hoping to have Foundations for phonics. We are teaching definitely vocabulary, fluency, comprehension. But we're going to look at these areas and do kind of a gap analysis over the next year and see, do we need to beef this up? Do we need to look at methods and materials to ensure that we are really in keeping with the research and the science in those three areas as well? So again, phonics is not the entire language arts program. It's just one of the Big Five of Reading. This program does have handwriting built into it, though. So one thing we are able to accomplish is remove the current handwriting program, Handwriting Without Tears. And we're going to use what's incorporated in Foundations. So that removes a student fee or a parent fee with the Handwriting Without Tears workbook. We like that program. It's great. It's been effective. But to ask teachers to keep doing that for so many minutes a day, plus this, I think it'll get just too confusing maybe to kids when this has the handwriting built into it that aligns to when they are learning the sentence. So we hope that works well. Yes.
Can you give me a real brief definition of phonemic awareness? I'm not familiar with that term.
I get the, it's beginning sounds, right?
Yes.
Beginning sounds.
Okay. I feel so bad for not knowing.
Phonics is going to include...
I got that.
...blends and...
Yeah. I'm good on the others. I just hadn't heard that term before. Yeah. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Yeah.
Put me on the spot. No pressure. I can definitely define vocabulary.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. It's not easy for us that didn't teach language arts. I've learned so much.
Yeah.
The simple view of reading, I won't go too deep into this, but I think it's helpful. It helps me. It's complex. I feel for reading teachers. This is not an easy science. Language comprehension, so finding meaning in that, what we call receptive language, what we hear, finding meaning in that, times word recognition code. All of that together is reading comprehension. So these get multiplied together. If we have a deficit in any of these two, that impacts reading comprehension by that same factor. Being a math person, I get this. So if my language comprehension is perfect, but my decoding is only 50%, my comprehension's only going to be 50%. So 100% times 50% is 50%. So what the science of reading helps us with is really digging into the components of each of these parts to ensure that these are closer to 100% so that our total reading comprehension is 100%. She can speak. There we go. I already mentioned this, those five areas of reading. We're going to look more closely at these and make sure that we have what we need here without adopting everything under the sun at once. We want to get good at these two things and then keep looking here. This is going to take some work restructuring the way we organize our classrooms and our day, the number of minutes we're spending on each component, et cetera. How do we weave them together? This is the history of the Search for Phonics Program. I mentioned already, we started back in 2019. Mrs. Keaton kicked off the ELA committee. We started meeting. We had a little phonemic awareness and phonics training December 4th, I'm sorry, and 10th. Then if we go all the way down here, we had the COVID closure in 2020. So we attended some training put on by the state support team in the Big Five. So one day on flu fluency, one day on phonemic awareness, and really dug in deep. It was really good. And we lost steam, just like the rest of the world. So we got back to it this past September, had a presentation by Foundations, had a presentation by SONE, which is another multi-sensory program, phonics program. We also checked out a program called IMSE. That's the Institute for Multi-Sensory Education. It was an online presentation and I had a phone call with them too. It was just with me. I did not take that to the committee. It was too cost prohibitive as well as training-intensive. It required five full days at $1,010 per teacher. So, and that really didn't include a lot of stuff for the kids. Grade program, but it was just too cost prohibitive, not to mention the training. So we have been getting together and learning a lot about the dyslexia legislation as well. All of that ties together. We had several teachers at Stephen Bell attend the virtual literacy conference. It is a national conference. It was super affordable this year because it was virtual. So they got exposed to a lot of different sessions. So Mrs. Keaton organized a debrief session where everyone shared out with their colleagues. I was able to attend that along with Dr. Cozad to hear them talk about different literacy topics. So that really supported our work as well. So I appreciated that. And then at the end of February, we received the kits and the teachers started to review those. And they started classroom visits again in other districts. This past Tuesday, I had the kits on display before the PTO meeting. I think there were about six different families that came in. It was really positive, great questions. I have a couple of people to follow up with regarding some very specific questions. And then tonight, I jotted down, I think I had about five people come in before the board meeting. And I hope you will allow us to adopt this program. We're really excited. I've already got emails from the Stephen Bell teachers saying, when are you going to bring those boxes back over to the building? Give me a minute. I need to take them for the board meeting. Any questions for us tonight?
Just a comment. Well, very happy about the dyslexia screenings because so much of that goes undetected until way later than it should have ever been. Yeah.
Yeah. It was a little scary, I think, to all of us at first because we knew this was coming. But now that we're into it, it's like, okay, the first year, we're going to screen everyone at K-3. That's next year after January 1st. That catches everyone. And if they don't meet the benchmark, we have to do a second screener. But we don't diagnose. We just provide parents with information. Your child may... Your child may need a second look by a professional that can diagnose. Then after that year, we are only required by law to screen all kindergartners. But we are required to screen anyone whose parents or teacher says, you know, I think this child is exhibiting some reading characteristics that may be symptomatic of dyslexia possibility, possibly. And so then we would screen.
Would that include students new to our district as well? But, okay.
If they don't come with a screening record.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment, not so much about the program, but just the process. I just want to say thank you. It's really great seeing it happen. As I learned, as you told us, all of the research that went into it, from you, the district, the educators, the focus groups, the training. I mean, it really seems like you've done your due diligence. And that coupled with the fact that we had the open review where families could come in. I think that partnership is just great, and I love seeing that. I attended both Tuesday's public curriculum review and was here tonight. It's kind of where nobody would come, but people came. They asked great questions, and it was easy to get busy. And that's great. So I think it's fantastic to have that transparency and to invite families in to take a look at curriculum, page through, and ask your questions before it comes to the board for discussion and decision. So thank you.
You're welcome. I enjoyed it. And thanks to Mrs. Keaton and the entire Stephen Bell staff because it's not easy, you know, to dig in and really give all this a lot of thought. You're changing your practice, and you've been teaching all day. And sometimes you have to leave your kids with a sub to go, look at this. And it's a lot of work on top of what you're already doing. And during a time when we were facing, you know, COVID and the budget situation that we've endured the last few years. And so we had that slowdown with adoptions. And so I think it was just hard for us to get back in the swing. So, boy, once we got back in the swing of all this, everyone just stepped up and really enjoyed it, I think. It's been a good six months.
I think the response from the community to the open viewing, I think, is really indicative of need to keep that going because, like Mike said, I didn't really expect a ton of interest in, number one, it's phonics. It's not controversial generally, and it's only K through two as well. So the people who are going to be interested, if you've got a kindergarten that's already passed this, you probably are initiative. So the fact that we got some good turnout on this, I think, is indicative, too. If this was a, you know, K through six math program, people are really passionate about how you teach them math. They like it our old, you know, our old school way, you know? Or, you know, something, a civics program or a society program, science. I think you'll see even greater interest from the community and probably more need to do it earlier in the process because people are going to have a lot more questions about something that was more comprehensive.
Yeah, it's a great model for the future.
Yeah. Yeah, I enjoyed it. Tuesday was fun. I heard, sorry, it was fun, too.
I'm sorry, my kid stole your owl.
Yeah, the owls were so popular Tuesday with the kids here. Like, where are those owls? Teachers are going to help me if I don't bring those owls.
I got it back. He didn't feel like he thought about it.
Yeah, I learned a lot about the owls. It's, what's the name?
Momma Echo.
Echo the owl. I can never remember that. But maybe in a year, we can have some of Ginger's teachers come back, and we can model that. We can do the whole Echo the owl thing with you. So maybe some of the new ones tonight. That'll be an initiation.
Thanks.
Ready for me to go on? Presentation for first.
Please.
Thank you. Oh, gosh, I have more. The Training for Foundations, I forgot about this. This is coming out the first week of August. Our three staff development days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday before the kids start. We have, we've got a great deal on that. The Montgomery County ESC worked closely with us to align to our calendar, even though it's got some pluses and minuses. They're going to miss out on some stuff here in the district, but at least we don't have to, you know, ask them to give up time in the summer or pull them out of class with subs and all that jazz. But we're going to be doing that in August. And then we're going to go ahead and invest in teacher leaders to get them online because they're kind of chomping at the bit to learn more about the program. We're also going to do some ongoing coaching and support and peer-to-peer observation next year. And Mrs. Keaton has always organized peer-to-peer observations, learning walks whenever something new has been introduced in the building. So that's going to be continued where teachers can go in and learn from each other and see what they're doing with a new program. Okay, we handled the question. All right, so let's talk about this summer already. Hard to believe, but it's time to talk about our Summer Advantage proposal. And we have done this in the past for students who are on reading improvement monitoring plans. So our youngest students, we focus on reading. So these are the rising first, second, and third grade students. They've been identified with some needs in early literacy. They have reading improvement and monitoring plans. And then we also invite students that have identified reading disabilities. So we try to target those students that have the most need, give them a little jumpstart on that next grade level. We have some teachers on the board agenda for approval tonight. I sent out a survey to see who might be interested in March, and they're all on the board agenda, and they all have the appropriate licensure. That was the only sift that we did there for teachers. We needed to see how many staff members we have before we send out the invitations to the students.
Sure.
So the focus, I already mentioned, we're going to target those kids that needed the most in terms of reading and focusing on work literacy skills. And we're going to target those specific Big Five areas of reading that I covered in the other presentation. That's going to be Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 12:00 the week of July 18th, July 25th, and August 1st. So right before we come back to school. This will be funded 100% with ESER grant funds. And that gives you an idea. It's on the board agenda. I think I made a mistake when I gave Sheila the numbers. These are the correct numbers. I think I forgot to include an hour of planning time for the teachers. So we would expect the teachers would get there before the kids, not with the kids. So if you add an hour onto what she has, that would be appropriate. And we're going to select one lead teacher to handle the administration part of the three weeks, even though I'll still be an administrative contact. Mrs. Keaton will still be an administrative contact. It will be in her building. But we still need a teacher lead. I've learned that from years past. Help with the scheduling and all that in the midst of it all. And then transportation. We want to offer transportation to families. So I'm working with Jacob on that. The exact cost will be determined once we get RSVPs from the families, and they will check a box whether or not they need transportation. And we'll do an estimate, put it out to see what kind of response we get from drivers, see what we can do there. So we should have all that completed by May 2nd.
And ESER funding covers all of those there?
Yes.
Nice.
Yeah. The other considerations are soft costs at Stephen Bell, custodial. You know, you're going to have a lot of kids in the building. Don't know how many until we get RSVPs back. We are asking that families commit to all three weeks, all four days per week because it's very difficult if people say, I can only come one week, or I can send them on Monday, Wednesday, Friday only. Then you've got classrooms that could have been stuck with other kids that may not have made the list data-wise. So we really want a full commitment so that we can service the kids in the best way we can. And then utilities, we'll have to run the air conditioning during that time. I think that's about it for key decision points around the program. We've done this before, usually at Bell Creek, but we're picking up younger learners this time. We typically only targeted second to third grade. So we are going to pick up younger kids, which will be great. And we're going to have our kids, if it's approved tonight, so our teachers will be able to have phonics materials at their fingertips this summer.
We anticipate that the instructors will essentially use their own classrooms.
Yeah. I --
And it might not be completely practical.
I think we have a couple of the teachers on the list. Okay, I'm just saying that. We'll work it out.
So Sunde Enerchak?
Yes, please do.
The reason that we're looking at utilizing the kindergarten wing is to cut down on the cost so we could be cost-effective because the kindergarten wing could be a zone for air conditioning. And Mrs. Gane mentioned that she would need about eight classrooms. And so that area would have approximately eight to nine classrooms. So our custodial and maintenance staff, they do know that that area would need to have the painting, the carpet, and the floors cleaned, and all of that zone would be ready to go right away and ready for the summer school advantage. So that would be the targeted area, should that work out with us.
Sure. Good point.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I was thinking about, I think we have one teacher, at least one from Bell Creek, that's on the list. So she'll be in.
And it's the closest in proximity to the bus drop-off. And so that would expedite time efficiency as well.
Great, thanks. Any other questions from the board?
Apologies if you already said this. So how many kids do we anticipate? I know they need RSVP. How many do we anticipate inviting or what percentage of our?
I have 187 on the list. Those are students that are on a reading improvement monitoring plan. That's not including, let's see, that's kindergarten first and second current. It's not current third graders.
Do we know the approximate cost of the Foundations program? Do you know that number?
Yeah, I have a printout at the, where I'm sitting. It's $49,000, but that includes all the student kits that are theirs for the first year. They would keep those and bring them to school next year. I assume they'll stay in good shape.
Right.
I don't know. But I totally agree with them. Include those. I don't know. We'll add that as a fee for the call and reimburse ourselves for that because it is a consumable. We typically would add that as a fee and take off the handwriting fee that we have. So we can talk about that. But with the student kits, it's $49,000. That includes our additional staff, so that covers all the home rooms plus shipping.
And is it a yearly license or is it just a one-time purchase?
The only thing that --
Is the consumable?
Yeah.
And are ESER funds paying for this as well? Okay.
And the training, I've got a good deal on training through the ESC, $100 a teacher.
It is good.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm really happy with that. It's local, so we don't have travel fees.
Right.
Just occurred to me, can you take five seconds and explain what ESER funding is? I'll probably ask every time I say the word ESER, just so in case anybody isn't aware.
Yeah, so it's the federal funds that school districts, township, cities receive from the federal government through the pandemic. And so there's ESER one, two, and I think three. There's the Corona virus at the beginning, so there's different funding. And that's to be used for any type of health kind of things that's through the pandemic or anything to make up for learning loss or to help with staffing. And so we're using that for the phonics program, the training, the summer advantage. We're also using it to reduce class sizes. We get to some new hires here in a few minutes to reduce some class sizes to address that learning loss from the pandemic. And so we have a couple of years to be able to use all those funds. So we've been very strategic up until now. We continue to be strategic, but we have not expended a lot right now. And we're very strategic, and that's why we're able to use those funds to get two years for seven of those teachers out of our ESER funds. So it really helped us.
So for those watching at home, when you hear ESER funds, that means at no cost to the district.
Correct.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Gane, for all of your hard work on both of those items, especially the phonics. It's been a two-year process in the making. So appreciate all your hard work, Mrs. Keaton, staff at Stephen Bell. So appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, some more things with the 2022-23 school year update. I did an update a couple months ago and so forth. So just to continue with some items that from last time. One of those items was school start and end times. And continue to try to look at those as we add back some busing for some of our students and also add back high school busing. And so as we're doing that and trying to, at the same time, deal with the limited number of bus drivers and getting additional bus drivers of trying to find a creative way to be able to do both of those things. Use our current staff or maybe one or two additional bus drivers and still bring back additional busing. So to be able to do that, we came up with a three-tier system that I've talked about previously, with the middle school starting early at Stephen Bell and the high school starting at the same time. They're on separate buses. The high school and Stephen Bell are not on the same buses. They're on separate buses. All these, all the buildings are on the separate buses. And our building administrators and staff really like that it's just that building, just those kids that are on that bus. And VCI is the latest there. Again, trying to deal with the challenges of traffic congestion. That's been a big complaint and concern with community and parents and so forth. And so that's why everybody's kind of spread out and strategic that way. And then also, obviously, as we're trying to bring back additional busing. But since the last meeting, Mrs. Sigmund, myself, and Mr. Willhide, who's the transportation supervisor, again, dug in a little deeper to our routing. And we were able to, as we did surveys with the high school students, next year's high school students, to get an idea of how many additional students that we were going to, that was requesting or that thought they were going to request busing for next year at the high school level. And that was about 350 or so students that we saw that said that they would like busing. And we're going to do it more detailed. We're going to have people officially opt in as they do their final forms, which is next year's registration online. They're going to officially in there and say, yes, I want busing in the AM or PM if they're eligible. That was just to try to get an idea of how many high school students we were going to try to accommodate. And so as we did that, Mrs. Sigmund, Mrs. Willhide, myself, we were, as we looked at things, we were able to, we had 15 minutes between each tier, and so we were able to go from 15 minutes to 45 minutes. And I know half five minutes, but that's five minutes, which is big in the school world. Five minutes is big. It's if you're tardy or not tardy, maybe five seconds, though. But five minutes is a lot in school. And so we went from 8:20 for Stephen Bell and the middle school, went back to 8:15. So that's 45 minutes between the middle school and Stephen Bell and the high school. And then we went 45 minutes from Stephen Bell and the high school to VCI. And so that actually gained us two 10, two five minutes, a 10-minute for VCI. Because VCI was originally at 9:10 to 3:50. Again, so it gained 10 minutes back for VCI, which I know that was a concern, that that's the latest start time. And so we went from 9:10 to 3:50 to 9:00 to 3:40. And so that actually is about the same time that VCI and Stephen Bell were about four years ago for a long time. They were at 8:55 or 9 o'clock. And so it's actually reverting back to what it was just a few years ago for VCI. And so then we also have building open times that parents can drop off students at particular buildings. And then the preschool is down there. Again, that is a time to be, that we coordinate with the other buildings to make sure that the traffic flow didn't cross each other or very limited amount. And the school start and end times are also going to be in the handbooks, and the handbooks are -- And the handbooks are going to be voted on at next month's board meeting. And so that will be a part of each of the handbooks, those school start and end times. Questions or other thoughts from the board? Yeah. But I'm really pleased with Mr. Will Hyde and Mrs. Sigmund and to be able to try to go from 15 minutes to 45 minutes and really get that BCI time 10 minutes earlier. And again, we do offer champions at Stephen Bell. We do have a little bit of an uptick in our BCI kids there, but it was about 15 or 16 this year. Actually, it kind of flipped, which makes sense. I think we had a handful of Stephen or BCI kids there. And then Stephen Bell was 15, 16. It's champions or daycare and it kind of shifted. The BCI kids are about 15 or 16 are there in the morning. And I have maybe a handful of Stephen Bell kids that have registered so far. But you know, it's early registration for that, but that's just the preliminary numbers. And we obviously bust those kids over from Stephen Bell to BCI.
Okay.
There's no other?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And then hiring updates, obviously, that's a huge part of the meeting tonight. And really, as you think about it, hiring is one of, if not the most important decisions that a school district makes. Who it hires and puts in our classrooms with our students is extremely important decision for us. And we take it obviously very seriously and very time consuming for us, but obviously very worthwhile. And this year, based on some early retirements, some early resignations, and also adding some additional staff out of ESER funds for reducing class sizes, we were able to get an early start on that hiring process. And probably about a month earlier than probably what we typically would do or other school districts would typically do. And so that just kind of briefly goes through that process. We post our jobs on the Daytonary Consortium, as do other school districts in the Daytonary, obviously. And also on our website. We attended job fairs at the University of Dayton, Wright State, which also Cedarville, Windburg, and Central State were combined with the Wright State Job Fair and then Miami. And so we interviewed some folks at those particular places. And we actually have a couple that interviewed at UD that were impressive at UD. And then we took them to the first round interview, obviously very impressive, and the second round, and they got the job. So those job fairs do pay off for us finding quality individuals. We had about 350 combined applicants for about 14, 15 positions. We conducted over about 60 interviews, over 60 interviews, first and second round. And like I said, that's the building principals, the teachers are doing those interviews. And they're also trying to be a principal and teacher at the same time, you know, the same kind of timeframe. So it's extremely time consuming for us to be able to do that. But a very rigorous process. We have some, we have some, I think, pretty challenging questions for those applicants and to be able to dig a little deeper and not just, obviously, get away with an easy textbook answer. They have to really, you know, explain what their answers are and be able to apply those. And then obviously, we had 15 new hires in county because we have a few other folks that are on the agenda tonight that resigned or retired and so forth. So we'll be posting those also. Just the, and we'll meet them in a few minutes with the principals. But just some top-notch candidates, quality individuals, cream of the crop, just very high-quality individuals. They have to be a high-quality person before they can be a high-quality teacher. And we have some high-quality individuals and therefore high-quality teachers that our kids are going to benefit for the years to come. So we love that they're here tonight and welcome as they get board approved tonight. So just wanted to kind of briefly go over the process and hiring. Any questions on any of that?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
That number kind of stands out on the slide there, over 350 combined applicants. That seems like a high number. I think when I read that, that tells me people want to come to Bel Brook and people want to work in Bel Brook. And I think that's something we should all be really proud of, in the community, in these buildings. I think that's a good question.
And that was said numerous times with our candidates. They want to be here, the destination district, they just really want to be here. So I would agree.
I think that's a good point.
Definitely. Yeah, for a few of those, we had, we had over 100 for two or three positions. Yeah, it's a lot of resumes, a lot of looking through resumes.
All right, thank you. And we go to open communications. Thank you, Audrey. First, we have Dr. Brenniger to speak about mental health.
Good evening. And if I could first, just before I get launched into my prepared remarks, just acknowledge my gratitude for the school nurses. I mean, I know I had contact with both Mrs. Malice and Kimmy Blaschek. And if, you know, they have to be nurse and therapist, I think, too, at a time like this. So it was, they were just wonderful.
Sure.
All right, I thought this three minutes is a little over, so hopefully that's some grace. So I wanted to speak on two separate, but I see them as related concerns. Mental health and Ohio House Bill 616. We are lacking enough mental health providers to care for people of all ages. Many of you know I'm a practicing clinical psychologist, and we were overloaded before COVID. It's only gotten worse. When it comes to school-age kids, providers have limited numbers of after-school appointments. This means that parents have to repeatedly pull their children from school for hour-long appointments close to arriving time. Further, some parents have difficulty taking children to any daytime appointments given their work schedules. Now, mental health services differ from an annual checkup or six-month dental cleanings. They are often weekly or bi-weekly appointments. For these reasons, I urge the district to expand their school-based mental health offerings with licensed mental health counselors. I know many area districts contract with local mental health agencies. When I was a grad student at Miami, we had training sites in K to 12 schools. Working with grad programs at Wright State and UD could offer low-cost services. I know that Principal Hand has expressed a desire for even one more full-time counselor or the equivalent. I support this request. The second concern I will speak about is Ohio House Bill 616. It's a near carbon copy of the so-called Don't Say Gay Bill in Florida. I will share what I sent to Representative Lanten and Senator Hackett. Leave local communities in charge of our education. Do not censor education and harm our children with HV616. In America, our public schools have a sacred duty to provide our children with accurate and factual information about the world around us. But Ohio House Bill 616 would enact wide sweeping censorship in Ohio schools on so-called, quote, divisive topics. These divisive topics would initially include a broad range of gender, sexual, and racial identities that are reflected in the lives of our community. The bill also empowers the State Board of Education to censor any topic they choose in the future. Please oppose HV616. Bel Brook Sugar Creek can govern our own education without state censorship. And then tonight, to Bel Brook teachers and students, some of you are here in the audience, please know that I stand with others in our community in strong opposition to this bill, a bill that would threaten teachers' licenses for giving continuing education on things like intersectionality or how students' various identities intersect with each other. Talking about race, gender, and sexual orientation does not sow division. Rather, it fosters understanding and compassion, which strengthens mental health. We know that race-related trauma contributes to poor physical and mental health outcomes. We know that LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Do you know what does sow division? The vile racist graffiti threats I saw sprawled inside the porta potty at Morris Reserve right here in Bel Brook Sugar Creek this past Sunday, discovered by my sixth-grade Girl Scout troop. Thankfully, the park district was responsive in taking this down pretty quickly. We must do better, and opposing HV616 is a step in the right direction.
All right, thank you very much. And Dawn Holding for the softball program.
First of all, I want to thank you all for sitting in that seat because I could never do what you do and take people like me showing up here. But I truly hope you all take this, what I'm about to say, too hard and someone does something because I'm over it. I'm representing multiple families today. There is no confidence in the coaches of the softball teams at the high school. We had a student coming home on a bus last Thursday be slapped by another athlete. Do you think anything was done to them? They were levied a three-game suspension. You want to know how that went? The first game was a rain out. They still counted that game. That student sat in the stands. She was told not to be on premises. She still was there. During the week after that game, she harassed the other student who she slapped. She told teachers that the other girl slapped her. She told all kinds of stories on her. I mean, ask your students, they'll know all of them, right? So I find that a problem. If this school is going to represent zero tolerance, okay? So several of us actually approached the mother of the student to tell her. And this is what our kids are hearing. Our students didn't say it. We went to the mother. In doing so, the coaches actually screamed at our children, saying, it's over, it's done. And so last night, they were threatened. The coach used the word, this is stupid, correctly, you know, quickly corrected herself. They go, well, bad word, bad word. Threatened our students. If they speak of this, continue it, whatever, they will be punished. However, we have a child who slapped another child, not punished, okay? So today is game two. This is game day two punishment. The girl dressed in her uniform, sat in the dugout, passed ball with girls, and put out equipment. That is not a punishment if we're a zero-tolerance school, period. I don't understand how any parent could think that. The coach literally said tonight, I'm going to pretend I didn't see that. And the girl is in the dugout, dressed in uniforms, everything. And I've talked to several in the administration. I have several parents I can call and bug more of the administration. I'm trying not to, trying to make it, let somebody investigate this because I'm done. Because it's a waste of their time for multiple people to call in. But we can definitely get more proof if we need it. These coaches cannot control the players and punish them and follow through on the punishment in my eyes. There's a third game that's supposed to happen. Is she, you know, is she going to play? Because at this point, that's the next step in my eyes. The schedule for our softball program is ridiculous. I advise all of you to look at it. We have eight games scheduled next week. Yesterday, we had a game at Blanchester, a double header. Thank God it was rained out because my kids actually go to school in the process of playing softball. So I wish you guys all go check the JV softball schedule. In addition to that, there's some nasty treatment of these players. And I advise, investigate it. Go ask these players how they are talked to. When a coach says, oh, you think I'm nasty now? Just wait. That is not how you talk to repeat students and players and athletes. If we're trying to set an example for these students. So I'm asking the board, please, Dr. Cozad, I know you're a little bit aware of this. I want something investigated and looked at with this coaching staff because it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going on to the superintendent's report. We have, this is part of our consent agenda, 8A and 8B, which includes the new hires. And Dr. Cozad, I know you have a hand carry. Would you speak to the items in 8A and B, please?
Yep, so additional to what's on the agenda is recommend approval of the following one-year employment contracts effective with 2223 school year, Sarah Greca, who's the new art teacher at Stephen Bell and BCI. DA 150 step two. And then recommend acceptance of resignation from Teacher Goddard Albati, effective end of day, May 27, 2022. And then recommend acceptance of resignation from Special Dean's Assistant Kathy Metia, effective end of day, April 22, 2022.
All right, are there any items in the group of 8A and 8B that a board member would like us to separate out for individual discussion? All right, hearing, hearing nothing then. Do we have a motion to approve the new business, 8A, Certified License Employment, Resignation, and Leave of Absence and Supplemental Duty? And 8B? Did I read this right? Support Staff Employment, Resignation, and Leave of Absence.
Move to approve?
Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Any questions, comments? It's great to have such a great crowd of folks to approve. All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, and I think they've probably introduced people.
Princels want to introduce.
Yeah. So we start with Mrs. Keaton.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm delighted to introduce the folks that you just approved. Thank you so much. So tonight, we have our new kindergarten teachers. So I'd like to introduce properly Gina DeCico and Rachel Pierce. And Gina comes to us from Pennsylvania. And she currently is residing here in Bel Brook. She is teaching right now in Beaver Creek, so we are stealing her from Lisa Walk and Trayvon. And Rachel Pierce is currently teaching in Wilmington. And so we're stealing her from kindergarten, three years at Wilmington. And we are just delighted that they're joining the kindergarten team. And then Amanda Nagel is joining us from Mad River and Beverly Gardens. She's a student teacher there. And she's one of 10 or 12 student teachers right here.
At Mad River?
At Mad River.
So there are four currently.
Oh, okay.
I thought there were. Cedarville is a lot. Maybe that's what.
Maybe that's what it was. And her principal at Beverly Gardens was very jealous that we're hiring Amanda and she's not. And so we're delighted to have Amanda join us. And I believe Dr. Cozad had interviewed Amanda at UD at the dock there. So she hit it all the way through the process. And Amanda will join us in the first grade team. And then we have Haley Puckett returning to Stephen Bell. Haley Puckett did her student teaching with Peggy Collier in second grade. And then she obtained a job at Fairborn Primary. And so Vicky Huna Paul will be very sad that I'm stealing Haley to come back to Stephen Bell. Haley is getting married to a love of her life, Hunter, this July. And she will become Haley O'Call. Did I say that correct? And so she'll join the second grade team, so she'll return to second grade. And then Mr. Phelps and I had the pleasure to interview and recommend hire Sarah Greca for our art position. Thank you so much for returning the art program. I mean, what a delight that our students are finally going to have art that's A to Y. We have not had art in the district for three years. And so Sarah Greca, it is going to be a pleasure to have you at both buildings. And Sarah is currently doing, are you on your fourth gig at Beaver Creek Subbing?
Fifth or sixth.
Yeah, so they just keep putting her subbing in multiple places in Beaver Creek. Currently, she is at Trayvon where Gina is that, so I'm stealing another one from Lisa Walk. Good friend Lisa Walk and I are good friends. And so those are my peeps that are joining us at Stephen Bell, so thank you.
All right, thank you. We won't, well, we'll try to keep you from getting charged with theft. It's all legit. It's all legit.
Mr. Carpenter, we got it coming from a couple of directions. We are delighted to be able to bring back the art program. We still have a plethora of art supplies that were left behind. We tried to use some of those up this year in curriculum activities as well as staff bonding activities. I am no bomb Ross, but I did try to lead some team building with some art. So we're happy to have an actual art expert to do that for us now. And she's going to do a great job for us. As if Bell Creek did not have a lot of new staff last year, we've got a whole other. We've got a whole other slew for this year's class. So in third grade, we have joining us Julia Jones, who's coming to us from Clinton Massey Elementary School and resides in Centerville. Also from Clinton Massey Elementary School. We are bringing to the fourth grade Ashley Morton to teach science and math for us. And soon to be a gifted intervention specialist, at least have a licensure. She resides in Spring Grove, very happy to join us. I also began my career out in Clinton County, so I know what that drive is like. So I know the desire to get closer to home, so that's right for them. Also from Clinton County, though, we have Lori Heel. Lori is going to be joining our third grade team. She resides in Waynesville. Let's see, also in third grade, we have Cheyenne Evans. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today. She is attending her sister's wedding. Tonight's the rehearsal there, two weeks from wedding. So that obligation sort of trumped beating all of you. And she's returned to us from Spring Grove. She had a tough time out of college last year finding a job. And incidentally, found herself at an elementary school in Spring Grove using her P3 early childhood licensure with her intervention specialist licensure, teaching physical education in a very adaptive student center way. So we're very excited to bring Cheyenne into third grade. In the fifth grade, we are bringing in two teachers. One is Delilah Cox. Delilah also was scouted and brought to us by Dr. Cozad at the UD Hiring Fair. And she has a math and ELA background. She was most recently still teaching at Mad River and resides in Cincinnati. And is a UD graduate, or soon to be, right? Also, I'd like to introduce you all to Mr. Scott Kellin. Scott Kellin's coming to us from Wilmington Middle School. Recently, the Kellin family has moved here to Belbrook and is looking for a new district and will be a part of our community culture. Also, I think it's an honorable mention that Michael Garrison is here on the list. He is not new technically to our district. He is our ESL teacher, who has been contracted up until now for the last several years through the Green County EST. But he will be serving students at both the high school and Belle Creek, but now as a Belbrook employee rather than a contracted service. So we're happy to bring them into the district as well. He does a great job for all of our kids.
Stand up, please, Pines.
Yeah, I hear that. We're thrilled. We're thrilled to have so many new faces at Belle Creek. And we're very excited to get them interacting with our teams and helping to move our school culture forward in even more positive directions. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ackley and Mrs. Hill can't be here tonight. So introduce our new guidance counselor at the middle school, Carly Miller. She's coming from Wilmington Middle School and also is a former teacher at Felicity Franklin?
Yes.
Yep, Felicity Franklin for a few years there. And she's also a Belbrook resident. So we're really happy to have her on board at the middle school. So welcome. And that's, if you're counting, that's four from Wilmington.
I know. I thought the gas pipeline was coming through. I heard a pipeline from.
I talked to an elementary principal, the middle school principal twice. Director of Curriculum and the superintendent, when I talked to the director of curriculum, she said, "Stop calling me." "Stop taking our people." So something's going on well in Wilmington. We have some high-quality folks coming from there, so we appreciate that.
And then Mr.?
All right, high school, we have a shortlist compared to some of the others. We have three positions we have been lucky enough to fill. We have Ashley Beatty. She is starting to join us from Greenville High School. And she is a social studies teacher. She's looking forward to joining us. Shannon Grasula back here in the purple, she got the memo. She is an art teacher currently at Middletownville School. That's what I'm saying. It's a little dumbass, but I'm sure of it. And she'll be joining our art department. And over here, this dapper-looking gentleman in the suit is Ken Lawyer. And Ken is a math teacher. He taught at Big Christian and is currently here, he has students at Valley View. And we're lucky enough to grab him as well. So we have three new great teachers that join our already great staff. And I'm very excited about it. Welcome to everybody else, too.
Welcome to here. Yeah, the welcome to all of you. All right. Let me go on to board policies.
Okay, recommend approval of the following changes and revisions to board policy. These are, these are second read for these board policies. They were on the last board meeting. And so these are second read. And then the technical change only, that whole paragraph. Since Mr. Bold, as our technology director, left us, he was also our district compliance officer with anti-arrestment and discrimination and so forth. And then also was web accessibility coordinator. So Todd Whalen is taking a vast majority of those. The compliance officer and Matt Long, Matt DeLong, I'm sorry, is the web accessibility coordinator. So those are technical changes only. And Mr. Liming, do you want to explain the credit card one?
Sure, I was approached by Charlie Odell, the athletic director, about possibly adding a credit card for his usage. Currently, we only have two, one for myself and one for Dr. Cozad, that are kept in the safe in the treasurer's office. Check, sign in, signed out according to audit guidelines. And so did a lot of research, had to find out what audit says about where it has to be kept. Came to the conclusion it still has to be kept in my office. But that in order for us to provide that card, we have to add that specifically to school board policy. This is one area, as you can imagine, that is very, very rigorously audited when we have our audits. People get fired as treasurers because an assistant maybe is paying the credit card bills and there's something irregular that they are not catching when they review it each month. So I know some people what that's happened to. So this policy is in great detail and it says who's going to do what. And I want to make sure if this is approved tonight, that everyone involved gets to, you know, Mr. Odell's office and the ladies in my office, everyone gets to read this thoroughly to make sure we're in compliance, so.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? I know we had some questions and comments last time. Are there any additional ones this time around?
I have a question. Previously, we'd learned that everything up to, everything before tonight wasn't Neola, whatever. It's a Neola option, correct? Are the new ones tonight, for example, the credit card, is that also from Neola?
Yeah, the only thing, yes, it definitely is. The only thing that was added to that, 100%. So the only thing that was added athletic director is just named as another district employee with Mr. Credit Card. Yep, so Mrs. Dorn had the pleasure of sitting down with our Neola rep, which is the organization that drafts our board policies, and to sit down and go through all those board policies. And they'll ask questions and dig a little deeper and so forth. So we do that twice a year. So the pleasure will be coming again in the fall.
I'll show that rep a little bit. I think it took twice as long as it normally does.
Actually, I saw him the other day and he was raving about you. He actually mentioned you.
No, that's a lie.
That was not a lie. The one thing that the comment he got about the, what was it?
About buying, buying from the Chinese, the electronics from the Chinese company. Did I, was I right? Did I turn him on to it?
So he was talking about that the other, he actually was.
The whole state of Ohio. From Chinese.
Very good. Anything else? We do. All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, next summer advantage 2022, and this is on the hand carry. And really, the only difference is the approximate total hours there. So recommend approval of 2022 summer advance reading program. Period K is free to be held July 18 through the 4th of August, 2022. Instructors rate of $4 an hour, probably 48 total hours per teacher. All funding for the project will be covered by federal ester funds. And then instructors, current staff members, again, depending on enrollment, include those folks there. Miss Ackley, Tate Ackley, Christine Beegman, Jill Caller, Ron George, Molly Nysley, and Rip Burger, Paige Rose, and Holly Warner.
All right, do we have a motion to approve? All right, Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Any questions, comments? All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes.
Program adoption, recommend approval of the Phonics Curriculum Foundations, Wilson Language Corporation, effective with the 2022-2023 school year for students in grades kindergarten through two.
Mrs. Anderson? Thank you. Mrs. Dorn? Questions or comments? I think we got those pretty well answered earlier. All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend approval of the following 2022 summer athletic camp, youth football camp, and youth boys' basketball camp.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Questions or comments? Any other details you feel like we need to hear?
I believe none of these are new, correct? These are still, these are existing, have been in the past.
Repeats.
You know, the minor clerical comment, under the basketball camp, assigns in the minutes, it captures it correctly. Should read that boys are going to the boys' basketball camp rather than girls are going to the boys' basketball.
Yeah, it does.
As long as it's captured properly in the minutes.
Yep. Thank you.
Good note. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
G Out-of-State Travel, recommend approval of the following out-of-state travel. So high school drones and full team that compete in the national race exponential conference in Orlando, Florida from April 24 through the 29th, 2022. Costs a district includes substitute teacher for five days, advisor, conference fees, mileage, room, and board paid from curriculum and federal grants. And then the high school boys' basketball. The Smoky Mountain Winter Classic at Gatlinburg Pittman High School in Tennessee on December 28 through the 30th of 2022. That's no cost to district.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Any questions or comments?
Real quick comment, the drone team, that was really cool. I got to see them do a presentation when they were seeking funding. They also received funding from area clubs, like an alliance club. So that's really good.
Yeah, it's nice, nice to see that kind of competition available. It's, I mean, who would have thought a few years ago that such a thing would exist? It's exciting.
Mr. Lambright's here doing a fantastic job with that, organizing for that group. So we appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. Good luck. You and your students.
Questions, any other questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so items of information and discussion, support staff, job descriptions. This is the first read for the technology specialists. So there's some revisions to that. And really, the major revisions are more of a focus on the digital literacy component of that and less of a focus, to an extent, on the technology pieces of that, but more focused on digital literacy. So that will come back for a second read on the 28th of April. And then a new job description for lunchroom, playground, and recess monitor. Again, both of those are first reads and will come back on April 28.
So if people have any questions, maybe the board members have questions, they should reach out to you?
Definitely.
Okay.
And then also items of information, graduation class of 2022, 21st of May at Holmes Field at Miami Valley South Stadium, 1:00 p.m. And we have to talk about rain date, but hopefully don't have to talk about a rain date, Sunday, May 22 at 1:00. So hopefully we have beautiful weather like we did last year.
Yeah, last year was terrific.
Yeah.
It was just terrific.
Gorgeous, so fingers crossed. It's not on here, but also Sugar Maple Festival. Hopefully, everybody can come out to that. And then the next weekend.
Next weekend.
This next weekend. And so we have, schools have a booth down there. And also we'll be in the parade with a school bus with an advertisement for needing some bus drivers. So hopefully they can't miss the big yellow bus that's going down the road in the parade.
Will it have a driver?
You don't have to pilot, no. And we are going to throw out what candy? What would be the best candy, the world candy to throw out to kids? It would be a school-proved. Smarties.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Not dumb-dumb.
Not dumb-dumb. Smarties, and not smart. Not throw them, but hand them out.
Okay, I, yeah, sure. Sorry. There's a product that I made the district aware of that I'm a little bit familiar with. I've been at some trade shows where I've seen some demonstrations and whatnot. It's by the company 3M, which makes a lot of other different products. But what it is, is it's a protective window film that can go on glass. It will still let things penetrate through it, but what it does is it keeps the integrity of the glass. So if you imagine crowbar, baseball bat, sledgehammer, whatever, it does not take much at all to break paint across. A good boot will do it. And two seconds later, somebody has threw that locked door. What this product does is that the glass will still shatter. However, you cannot gain entry. Now, not for forever, but for a considerable amount of time. That can really help in some type of a safety encounter. So I passed that along and Mrs. Sigmund and Dr. Cozad looked into it, spoke with an expert, which I certainly am not. A 3M representative came, did an audit, did an intensive review, and made a proposal, which I am very happy to say I believe was or will be accepted. Done, so.
It's installed three buildings already.
Already installed in some buildings. So, you know, nothing will ever be absolutely foolproof, but we want to really take every possible step that we can to ensure the safety of our students. We obviously have a lot of competing priorities when children walk through this building. But even in front of education, to me, I think safety has to be at the top of the list. So if there's ever little things that we can do to improve physical security, other safety measures, I just want to thank the district for looking into that and adopting it, and extremely quickly. It happened very fast, so thank you. It's already installed, yep.
That's awesome.
Questions?
All right. All right, finally, as part of the hand carry as well, I make the motion that we go into executive session to meet an executive session for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of a licensed public employee per revised Code 121.22 Paragraph G1. So I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes. We are going into executive session at 8:29. We do not anticipate any official action after the executive session. But you are certainly welcome to stay.
Watch us adjourn.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all for coming. Yes, indeed.